Madam Clerk?
Are we on...
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have public comments for matters not on the agenda, and I have 18 people signed up to speak. I do want to remind folks that you do have two minutes to address the council. And our timer tonight is flashing, but it is accurate. So when you see it on the screen, it is accurate. Our first speaker is Kyle Williams, then Noah Davidson, then Pamela Marquez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And before the public comment, I do want to remind the council and the public... Madam City Attorney, you can correct me if I’m wrong, but during a public comment, it does not allow us to engage in anything that’s not agendized for discussion.
So I’m trusting that you will do the right thing and make this work, not just for me, but for everyone that trusted you when we were approached with our organizations.
I think this afternoon, we did make great progress towards, as I describe it, fulfilling the promise. And we’re on our way. So thank you. Thank you for coming.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
One is, right now, C-3 Project for the Convention Center has removed the bus shelter at 14th and L Street.
Jeff, it’s being relocated to half a block up.
Well, look at where that relocation is and how accessible it is shelter-wise and bus-wise and for, should we say, parking. Because both there and at 11th Street, you have huge parking problems right now. You’ve had the 30...
Do you park to ride the bus? Do you park to ride the bus? Is that what you’re saying, Jeff?
It’s too hard to get in there with the construction, and there’s too many parking spaces to try and pull the bus in at both 14th and 11th Street.
Okay, well, check in and make sure that they...
So you’re having the buses that are sitting on the street, so you have no access. And that is the principal location that you’re moving to get people north.
The parking spots are supposed to come out. I’ll make sure that happens.
The other thing is, it’s 7th and G...
You don’t do anything out of the goodness of your heart up in this council. We’ve seen that through your actions. I’ve told you multiple times. Actions always speak louder than your words. And considering that you ignored vital communities that are providing services over one that already has more than enough money, it’s pretty damn telling.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Shanier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I just want to clear up one misperception, which I think is important. I’ve heard it from a lot of people, so I think it’s important to do. The $750,000 for the LGBT Center was actually months in the making. Obviously, the timing at the end of the day was close to Pride, but the two are really unrelated issues. Did I interrupt you when you were talking?
Please keep the comments from the audience.
You guys, you all can believe it or not, however you want to do, but these are two unrelated issues.
Councilmember Hanson.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Shanier. In 2016, Mayor Steinberg at a Stonewall Democratic Club forum offered $500,000 in assistance for the LGBT Center to finally buy a home. It’s been paying rent in a building that is 3,000 square feet since 1986.
I just don’t understand how this is okay. As elected city officials, it is not one of your primary responsibilities to protect the health and well-being of your constituents. We’ve gotten the runaround from absolutely everyone involved, and still, none of our questions have been answered. Again, the FCC has stopped corresponding with us. Verizon, their corporate attorney, reached out to us last week and basically told us good luck.
Your time is up, but I want to take a moment here. You and your wife, I think, gave you a very important testimony. I want to ask the city manager and the city attorney, in terms of getting answers to our constituents, what can we tell them tonight in terms of a timeline, in terms of whether or not we are... How we are looking into these questions and how we might get back to them?
Mayor, at the request of Councilmember Jennings’s office, my office started to do some research and started to work with city staff. I know the city manager has his staff, Maria Maguena-Gold, the IT director, looking at this issue. We’ve been actively, actually, working on this for about a couple of weeks. The city of Sacramento has a limited role to play. We’re trying to define exactly what the city could be able to step in. It’s true, the FCC, I saw the emails, has pretty much blown this family off. So that’s what we’re looking at. And that’s what I’ll be working with my colleague, the city manager, to give some recommendations to the council.
Okay, I appreciate that. So we hear you, and it’s our obligation to get back to you. I’m not telling you what the conclusion is going to be. You’re making some claims about the health impacts of 5G. We owe you at least an explanation and our point of view on the claim that you’re making. And we will endeavor to ensure that we get back to you with a transparent answer to some of the questions that you have raised. Okay? Thank you.
So this is an opportunity to hear the public, and I encourage us to listen to the public. Thank you very much.
Kyle Williams.
Why, thank you. And I’d like to say thank you for donating your time or being paid for your time or being a citizen, whatever you do. And each position is different. Thank you. I just want to start off with a quick question. I think I can ask this. I don’t know if you can answer this. Is this town of Sacramento set up with Verizon to go forward with 5G already? Has that already happened? Did you ask the town of Sacramento before you did that? Do you realize what 5G is? Have you guys given this some thought? From what I understand, I mean, five cities west of us, which are highly technologically more advanced than Sacramento, have already said, “No way.” Please look into this. This is nuts.
Next speaker is Noah Davidson, then Pamela Marquez, then Hannah McMahon. Noah here? Oh, thank you. And feel free to line up if you would like to.
Hello, good evening, council. I’m here to speak on 5G again. First thing kind of shocked me tonight, you spent quite a bit more time talking about a pool than you did in the city council meeting where you were discussing the deal with Verizon to become one of the 5G, first 5G cities in the world. As the previous gentleman just stated, I wonder how much you actually researched the topic before doing so. And it’s alarming, at the very least. So I just have a couple of questions for you all. And I understand that you do not have to answer these questions, but you do have the option to do so. So it’s your choice. First of all, I would like to know which of you voted in favor of making Sacramento one of the first 5G cities in the world. Let the record show that the council is not willing to answer the first question. Next, I would like to know if any of you are willing to tell us how much time you spent researching the health effects of radio frequency radiation before voting in favor of 5G. Again, let the record show. Council is not willing to answer basic questions. Lastly, the World Health Organization has classified radio frequency radiation as a possible carcinogen. In a recently published article from The Lancet, one of the most prestigious medical journals in the world, states that RF radiation is now proven to cause a number of biochemical and physiological effects. Why do you think it is acceptable to expose your constituents to this risk explicitly against our will? That’s what I expected. Oh, one last question. Where’s the meeting we were promised last month? It’s been over a month. You said seven to 10 days. Where’s the meeting?
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Pamela Marquez, then Hannah McMahon, then Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Clerk will help you with the projector here shortly.
Upside down.
Good evening, city council. My name is Pamela Marquez. In June 2017, the city of Sacramento agreed to the first-of-its-kind public-private partnership with Verizon to put Sacramento on the map as one of the first 5G cities in the world. This agreement was not put out to bid, and the public largely was not informed about the agreement, nor did it have the opportunity to express their opinion on this agreement. According to the June 6th city council video, where the council unanimously voted in favor of the agreement, there were only five days between announcing the agreement and the city council approving the agreement. In this video, members of the council repeatedly say the city needs to be willing to take risks. But who is really being put at risk here? We are. The people living near the antennas, the people exposed to dangerous radiation inside their homes against their will, the people who live in constant fear for our health and the health of our children, the people whose property you have devalued with your reckless and selfish decision, the people who had zero say in this agreement or the placement of the antennas. You have sold out your constituents. Shame on you. And according to this article in the Sacramento Business Journal, you got hoodwinked. The article also states Verizon is hiring workers from out of the area with poor track records for safety and accountability to install the antennas in our area. This may explain some of the permitting issues we have found. You relinquished your authority and sold out your constituents for peanuts. And Verizon hasn’t even delivered those peanuts. It’s been two years since the agreement. Thank you. Shame on you, city council.
Our next speaker is Hannah McMahon, then Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. It has now been about seven months since the city of Sacramento and Verizon installed a very powerful cell antenna in front of our home, five feet away from our property line. Seven months of worry, seven months of not knowing whether or not we are harming our children by staying in our home, seven months of not knowing whether or not their development is being affected, seven months of sleepless nights. I come before the city council tonight to ask, how is this considered acceptable? We have brought our worries and our concerns to our elected officials. We have done our due diligence, done everything we can within our legal rights. What have we been given in return? We have received few answers to our questions. We were promised a meeting that has yet to happen. We have been promised answers that we have not received. Seven months. How long could this take? Every day that passes wears on myself, my husband, and my family. The worry that comes along with this alone is enough to feel like a violation of our basic human rights. This antenna was placed near our property with absolutely no warning and without our consent. What choices do we have? Sell our house that our family worked extremely hard to buy at a discounted rate due to the property value going down because of the antenna? To move to another neighborhood just to turn around and have another antenna installed right out front? The FCC no longer responds to us. Verizon has stopped communicating with us. The city council has not given us much useful information in months. Again, as our elected representatives, how is this acceptable? There are multiple reports around the country and around the world of cities that are taking steps to halt the expansion of 5G until there is further testing. I understand all of you wanted to be one of the first smart cities in the world, but I ask all of you, at what cost? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The next speaker is Arrow McMahon, then Sean Cox.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and city council members. Here we are again, another Tuesday night, another city council meeting. Starting to wonder just how many of these meetings we’ll have to attend before anything actually gets done about our situation. Received an email from Rick Jennings yesterday, and we absolutely appreciate the work that has been put into this by his office. I don’t want you to think we don’t. But once again, none of our questions were answered, and the responses do not have anything to do with our particular situation. This note states that the city cannot regulate personal wireless service facilities, which includes small cells based on the facility’s environmental effects of radio frequency emissions if the facility is operating in compliance with FCC regulations. What if our antenna is not within the guidelines set by the FCC? The permit done for our antenna unfortunately is missing this information. What about our property values? My brother Noah and I have been attending these meetings for at least three months now. We still have not received any of the information we have requested or any answers to our questions. The last city council meeting before the recess, District 7 city councilman Rick Jennings stated that his office would be setting up a meeting on this topic at the Robbie Waters Center in seven to 10 days with experts attending that would be able to answer at least some of our questions. It is now the 20th day since that promise was made, and we still have no word on when our community is getting this meeting. In the past few months, Mr. Jennings has also brought his concerns to us that Noah and myself are the only constituents that have reached out to his office about the health and safety of the 5G expansion project. I’m left to wonder, has your view on this changed? While you’re riding down Windbridge during the Fourth of July parade, did you notice the amount of his 5G safe signs in your constituents’ yards? Did you notice how many people came to our 5G awareness booth on the Fourth of July? Since the recess, there has been a handful of investigative reports on our local news channels about cell antennas, the negative effects, and the concerns of the people. Did you see them? Every day that goes by, we gain more support from our community. Every day, the number of your constituents that become concerned about 5G and the negative health effects that might come with this new and tested technology grows in the city of Sacramento.
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you, Mr. McMahon.
Our next speaker is Sean Cox, then Patty Lukowicz.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members. One of the major problems with 5G that not many people seem to understand is the placement of small cell antennas so close to people’s homes. According to City of Sacramento’s webpage on 5G safety, and I quote, “Radio frequency emissions from antennas used for cellular and PCS transmissions result in exposure levels on the ground that are typically thousands of times below safety limits.” If you go to the FCC source that this quote was taken from, you can see that this quote specifically refers to antennas that are 50 to 200 feet above ground level. The antennas in our neighborhoods are being installed on top of light poles at roughly the same height as our two-story homes. That means we do not have the 50 to 200-foot vertical distance buffer. We are living directly in or very close to the main transmission beam of these antennas where exposure is at its highest. According to statements from FCC, as well as permits and warning labels for the antennas in our neighborhood, exposure can approach or even exceed the FCC safety limits or near the main transmission beam. Additionally concerning, permits for some of the antennas in our neighborhood show that safety limits are not being considered at heights above ground level. This is not a scenario that has come up very often with previous generations of wireless technology, meaning we are going to be exposed to largely unprecedented levels of radio frequency radiation, significantly higher than thousands of times below FCC safety limits as referenced by the city of Sacramento. It is either completely ignorant or purposefully misleading for the city of Sacramento to reference information that clearly does not pertain to the situation at hand just to ease people’s concerns. We want the city’s webpage change to reflect the truth about the exposure 5G will bring to us.
Next speaker is Patty Lukowicz, then Stacey Maddox, then Judy Mitchner.
Hi, welcome. My name is Patty Lukowicz, and I live in the Pocket Area, District 7. Hi, Rick Jennings. I’m not a scientist or an engineer. I’m not a doctor nor a lawyer. But I am a concerned parent and grandparent who wants to know if what my family is being subjected to is safe. Members of our group have been asking for months for Verizon, the FCC, and especially the city council, the city of Sacramento, to provide evidence that the specific conditions we are being subjected to are safe. None of these parties have been willing or able to provide this evidence. The only logical conclusion we are left with is that none of these parties have the specific evidence. Over these past few months, we have found plenty of evidence suggesting that we will be harmed by the antennas in our neighborhood. Hundreds of credible studies and thousands of experts are warning about the dangers of wireless radiation, specifically 5G. We have provided much of the evidence to the city for you to review. Where are the specific evidence that we will not be harmed by the antennas near our homes? All we have received is generic statements regarding FCC guidelines. These guidelines are over 20 years old and have been heavily criticized by thousands of members of the scientific and medical communities. They are also among the least restrictive in the world. China, Russia, Italy, Switzerland, Israel, and several other countries have all limits 100 times lower than ours. The exposure some of us will receive from the antennas in our neighborhood will certainly exceed those lower limits. None of the information we have seen inspires confidence that we will not be harmed by the antennas you are installing just feet from our property. The solution to our concern seems fairly simple. Provide the information or data that there will be no harm to my children and grandchildren as a result of installing the antennas...
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Or installing them until you have evidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Stacey Maddox, Judy Mitchner, then Rourke Vane.
Hi. So we’re here again. To recap, we all keep mentioning the meeting that we are very much looking forward to having in District 7. It’s been mentioned by neighbors and people on next door. It is something that we’re trotting out there because you offered it to us. And we’re really looking forward to that, to offering information to our neighbors. So we don’t want you to forget about that. I know you’re getting beat up here today, and maybe rightly so in some instances. But that meeting is important. So I just want to remind you that we are really ready for that to happen. Also, I’m not going to stand up here and talk about the symptoms or the health risks. That info has been covered in here well enough, and you’re unmoved. But it is safe to say that in the interim, no information has come out that states that 5G is safe at all. On the contrary, more and more municipalities throughout the U.S. and the world have banned 5G from their communities until it can be proven safe. Switzerland has actually gone so far as to say that 5G has caused health problems. It’s like the verbiage is important because they’re like, “We put on these 102 new 5G antennas, and now people are sick.” And they related it to it. The Swiss doctor tickled me because he’s like, “What are we doing? Why, we have scientists. We have the means. Let’s do some of this testing.” And it really should be that simple. Somebody should be doing some testing, but everyone’s just looking around like, “Prove it. Prove it.” You’re making them prove it that their kids are sick. That’s ridiculous. It is that simple. We should be doing the testing ourselves. The telecom people have told the Senate hearing that they are absolutely not going to do any research on their technology. They’re not putting aside a single dollar for any research on that technology. So someone should be doing it. We don’t do it like we’re not guinea pigs. Shouldn’t just do it, you know, in the neighborhoods and see how it rolls out, see how it happens. It’s really, really frustrating because there’s plenty of evidence that says it is harmful at this point. So we know you’re not moved by sick children or scientific data, so maybe financial effects. It looks like today that Lloyds of London and Swiss Breeze...
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Judy Mitchner, then Rourke Vane, then Cindy Lee.
City Council, thank you for having us. I’d like to talk about some recent news events regarding 5G and cell antennas. In March, Sprint turned off their cell antenna at Weston Elementary School after 10 cancer cases were reported by students, teachers, and children living in the vicinity. Power density measurements just feet away from this antenna showed an average of 5,000 to 20,000 microwatts per square meter, roughly 0.05 to 0.2% of the FCC safety limit. Permitting information for the antennas in our area show that the exposure in our and around our homes can be hundreds, even thousands of times higher than exposure next to the antenna at Weston Elementary. How do you think it makes us feel, knowing that every day we’re being exposed to thousands of times of more radiation than the people at this school where 10 cancer cases arose? In April, the city of Brussels halted their 5G rollout, as was just mentioned, specifically due to radiation concerns. Environmental Minister Celine Frimmels stated, “The people of Brussels are not guinea pigs whose health I wish to sell out,” out of profit. How do you know? How do you think we feel, knowing that our city council has no problem experimenting on us against our will? In June, CBS 13 reported on a Verizon antenna installed just outside Kids Inc. daycare in Folsom. The daycare owner claims that she was going out of business because half her students are leaving to get away from the antennas. Verizon is giving the owner the same treatment we’ve received, refusing to answer questions, refusing to move the antenna. Verizon was also found to have constructed the antenna without a valid permit. This story shows the reckless and abusive manner in which Verizon operates. It’s also another example of people’s lives...
Thank you for your comments. Your two minutes is complete. Thank you. The next speaker is Rourke Vane, then Cindy Lee, then Lori Mendoza.
Good evening. I’m here to talk about the Public Records Act submittal that I just did today. I’m asking for a viewable map of installed and proposed small cell locations for Verizon and any other telecom provider in the Greenhaven Pocket Area. I want the details on the closest physical address for each small cell, the type of small cell, 4G or 5G, and the physical configuration, e.g., mast-mounted antenna pole or pole-mounted 5G antenna, such as the Verizon-Samsung antennas currently installed on Pocket Road, the maximum stated output of each 4G/5G device, and the range of specific frequencies each device is licensed to radiate. I also want details, ask for details on the cellular tower frequency upgrades and power upgrades in the Greenhaven Pocket Area that have taken place or are planned from 2017 and forward, and the map of the Verizon plans to provide Wi-Fi in the parks, including the physical location of the poles and the type of devices to be mounted on the poles. and the type of devices to be mounted on the poles. I'm also requesting an explanation of the reason residents are not given advanced written notification of the planned installation of pole-mounted small cells. The current process is not transparent. That's what I want, is transparency added to this process. The public has been kept in the dark. And the current process is not transparent or respectful to the residents. Why is there no appeals process? There's nothing we seem to be able to do about this. All we do is come here and speak. We don't get any feedback from you or Verizon. The city owns the assets. Don't be afraid of taking control of our assets. Those are our assets, too. We own those poles. Why is the online permit viewing process so cumbersome? It's impossible to get meaningful information on cellular tower permits or small cells. This cloaks the permitting process from public view and runs counter to the Sacramento City transparency promise. As a final comment, Elk Grove recently passed a small cell setback ordinance for residential areas. I propose we do the same. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Our next speaker is Cindy Lee, then Lori Mendoza, then Janice Andres.
Good evening.
Hi. Just five days ago, a mainstream publication in Switzerland, as shown on the screen, published some of the first reports of people being harmed by 5G technology. After 5G antennas were installed near their homes, residents of a neighborhood in Geneva began experiencing headaches, insomnia, fatigue, and tinnitus. People in our neighborhood have reported some of these exact same symptoms. These individuals in Geneva also complained of feeling helpless and victimized in their own home. They have reached out to the public officials and been told that the equipment is compliant with their safety standards, and there's nothing they can do. No specific evidence that the conditions they are being subjected to are safe and has been provided to them. This precisely mirrors the experiences members of our community have had, feelings of victimization and helplessness and a complete lack of support from our elected officials. Most frustrating, no regulatory authorities anywhere in the world are able to provide specific evidence that the conditions they are being subjected to is safe. Does this not raise a huge red flag in your minds? This is your decision to make. Sacramento, one of the first 5G cities in the world, will go down in history as a public health disaster. Lastly, this article takes comments from a doctor and member of Swiss parliament regarding 5G. The members of parliament highlights the clear absence of studies regarding the safety of 5G or how it will interact with the other radiation sources we are already exposed to. He has called for a halt to the 5G rollout in Switzerland until these effects have been thoroughly studied. Our group is here tonight to tell you we do not want to be subject to the dangers of 5G and request that you take action to protect our health and rights. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks for your comments tonight.
Next speaker is Lori Mendoza.